Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Rancho Mirage City Council Meeting for Thursday, November 15th, 2018. The City Council also serves as a library and observatory board. The Housing Authority and the City Council also represents Redevelopment Successor Agency. It's one o'clock, or it's a little after one, so let's begin. If you would please all stand and join me in the salute to our flag.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and it looks like we have a big crowd here today. It's good to see you all and the interest that you have in city government, so we'll allow you 10 seconds each, though, so don't plan anything too long. I'd like to take a -- oh, I'd like to roll call first, huh?
Yes.
Kristi?
Councilmember Hobart. Councilmember Townsend.
Here.
Councilmember Weil.
Here.
Mayor Protem Smotrich.
Here.
And Mayor Kite.
Well, again, I'd like to welcome you all here today, and I'd like to take a moment and offer our deepest condolences to the victims, their families, and the communities affected by the recent shooting in Thousand Oaks and the current Woolsey and Camp fires. I'd like to urge all of our residents to keep those who are affected in their thoughts and prayers as they continue to fight and start to rebuild from their tremendous loss. We are thankful for the police, fire rescue, and public safety personnel for taking the time away from their families and continuing to serve, protect, and safeguard our neighbors and their community. I'd like to take a moment of silence. If you would please stand and honor these individuals. Thank you very much. You may be seated. You will note on the agenda for today, the presentation we were planning on making to recognize our Sheriff Frank Savoni. He will be honored in two weeks at the December 6 meeting. So those of you who came to thank Frank for all he's done, you can come back in a couple of weeks. At this time, I'd like to open the floor to non-agenda public comments. This gives you all an opportunity to come forward and speak on any item that's not included in the agenda today. We would hope that you would come forward and keep your comments as brief and concise as possible, and we'll allow you three minutes each, so plan what you have to say, and we'd like to hear from all of you. Our city clerk will keep track of the time, and we'd like to keep your presentation under three minutes, and if you would also give your address when you come forward. So we have the various indications on these cards here. For those of you who filled them out, you'll be called first. If you did not fill out one of these cards, the city clerk does have them, and we will call on you at the end of the presentations. So we'll start with Brad Anderson.
Hello, Brad Anderson, Rancho Mirage, Ferber Drive. I want to talk just a little bit again about the Conchela Valley mosquito and vector control district. You may be surprised, but I'm kind of disappointed in that district anyway, not to sidetrack too much, but you may not be aware, but there's a easement, or the CV link is asking that public agency for easement on their property to access trade or place in the roads or the streets around there, which is industry, industry or anyway, but I think I'm really, I think they're going to kind of, they tabled that until January, which is good, so hopefully they can reconsider that, because I think the district, you know, that belongs to all the cities and the county, and everybody should have a fair, at least know about it, and then they can make an opinion about it that way, so. And I have to leave early, so I can't stay for the whole meeting, I'm sorry, but I noticed that you're going to appoint the city manager to the board, which is great. I think you should probably do it for two months and then decide if you want a longer appointment, but I think it's great to have that say from our city on that board, and hopefully they can correct some of the issues that they have going on there. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Muldaugh Hill? I probably mashed your last name up, didn't I, Carol?
Well, you won't be the first or the last. It's Carol Muldaugh Hill. You kind of have to run it together. I am with the Colony Homeowners Association, and I'd like to address and say good afternoon, mayor and council and staff, and thank you all for the service that you give our community. We're very proud of you.
Carol, can we have your address, please?
Yes, it's 196 International Boulevard, Rancho Mirage.
Thank you.
My name is Carol Muldaugh Hill, and I am the vice chair of the Colony Homeowners Association. Our president of the CHOA asked me to be here today to speak on his behalf. Unfortunately, he's away on business. Under the Rancho Mirage Code, Division 5, Chapter 9.58, you established, and we thank you for that, a mobile home rent control. Additionally, you established a mobile home fair practices commission. That commission called a meeting last August, and it called a meeting in October, and unfortunately failed to meet for lack of a quorum. So I'm here today to ask you to encourage those people you have appointed to attend the meetings, number one. Number two, the reason for that is that we have some issues. The first one is the Consumer Price Index used to configure our rent each month, I mean each year when it's increased, is LA Orange County, and we were hoping that you might use the Coachella CPI rather than that. It's more conducive to our area. Secondly, we have found that the base rent calculation used by Hometown America since they took over the colony in 2005, both for sales and for rent increase, has been incorrectly based. The Article 9.5.8.020D, which states, "does not exceed the average rental rate for comparable spaces in the park," and by that I mean, for instance, there's an average of the comparable spaces for those that fall under rent control, and then there are those homes that are not under rent control, and they receive a higher base rent. What the hometown America has done is include the sum, so it skews by the increase, I'm sorry for my hands shaking. I'm really not scared, I just shake. So if you have, these are all the average homes, you know, this is the sum of the average homes. This is the sum of those not under rent control. They put them all together. It's incorrect. They're to use the sum of comparable space rent in the park, and that's been going on since they took over the colony. Pardon me? So that's what we want to be able to bring before the commission, and we would just like your help in encouraging those people to attend and possibly not waiting until February, and please, you know, something in December for us so that we can get going on this. That's it, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Carol.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I understand that Steve Kittenney, our city attorney, has been working with him to some extent, and my hope is that you'll continue to do so, because I think that's been the will of the council for a good number of years.
Yeah, one of the, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, your mayor.
Yeah, one of the issues, and the mayor brought this issue up, too, with respect to another one of our parks out there that are subject to rent control, and I do plan on bringing an ordinance before the city council that will replace the CPI that we're currently using, it's the Riverside County, Los Angeles one, with the Coachella Valley one. So at the time that that was, that we switched to that one, we didn't have a Coachella Valley CPI in place, so that's going to be my recommendation to the council. And I discussed the issue as to, I did discuss the issue as to the rents and how rents are determined, and it's my understanding that the rents are, we take the, you're supposed to basically look at like the average rent, and what's apparently or allegedly is happening is that the park is considering not only the rent, the rent control, the rent control rents, but they're also bringing in the market rate rents and coming up with an average that they apply to new residents.
Yeah, and just for the council's benefit, the last commission meeting, staff made an effort, because we knew we had items for them to consider, and there were issues that were going to be raised. Prior to the meeting, staff confirmed that we would have a quorum. Unfortunately, the result was there was no quorum, so there is a meeting in progress for December that we're locking in with that commission, so it will not go past the end of the year.
Thank you, Isaiah. Susan Ragsdale. Susan, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, mayor. It's a pleasure to meet you. I'm quite impressed with what you've done for our beautiful city. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have your address?
Oh, yes. 42536 Rancho Mirage Lane, number seven.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. It's with the utmost respect, compassion, and humility that I present a case for myself in regard to a management position at a Rancho Mirage Housing Authority property. It's taken a great deal of courage, time, and preparation to do this. I'm a sixth-generation Californian, and I'm an artist. In 1970, I graduated from Beverly Hills High School. I have a Bachelor of Fine Arts degree in painting from UCLA. I studied illustration at Art Center College of Design in Pasadena, and in 1997, I was given a professional certificate in computer graphics from UCLA Extension. For decades, I enjoyed a very interesting career in the graphic arts. In 2001, following the tragedy of 9/11, I made a decision to devote myself to helping others. I changed my career to become a certified yoga instructor and natural food chef and cooking teacher. In 2006, these skills provided me with employment as the resident manager of a hot mineral water boutique inn and spa in Desert Hot Springs, and I moved from Santa Monica to the desert. I really enjoyed this new position where I could conduct healing retreats. However, two years later, my mother became very weak, so I resigned from my job in order to be her full-time caregiver. For three years, Mom and I lived on her income in her rented house in South Palm Desert. When she passed away, I turned 60 and could not find work in any of my fields, graphic arts, hotel and spa management, or cooking. I literally applied to hundreds of jobs, often altering my resumes so as not to seem overqualified. Finally, I realized I could earn a living as a home healthcare provider. I signed up with Comfort Keepers Caregiving Agency and rented a tiny apartment on Indian Trail in Rancho Mirage. Over several years, I took care of many different patients in our area. Although I believe these caregiving experiences were good for developing character, generally I didn't like the work. It was frustrating that my large skill set was being wasted. In addition, I feel uncomfortable being a nurse and spending extended periods of times in the, of time in the homes of others. I'm going to run out of time. I'm sorry. In 2015, I needed a change, so I took my social security retirement benefits early, put myself on the waiting list for Whispering Waters Affordable Senior Housing, gave up my apartment, sold the furniture, and stored all my belongings. Then, by myself, I took off on a road trip adventure around the United States. First, I spent four months at a large, successful yoga ashram in Virginia where I did volunteer work exchange, cooking and cleaning. Then I went to the Berkshires in Massachusetts to do another volunteer work exchange in the kitchen of a natural healing center. After six months, I went to Sedona, Arizona, to help my father's wife in caring for my 90-year-old father. A year later, a former cooking client invited me to help her get on track with a healthy diet, and I lived in her beautiful, large home in Wisconsin for five months. In May 2018, earlier than expected, my name was at the top of the list at Whispering Waters, and I moved in. At Whispering Waters, I keep to myself living a quiet, simple life, taking my dog for extensive walks every day, tending potted flowers on my patio, and creating artwork. I only have friend, one friend, my next-door neighbor, James, who has accompanied me here. He does not have a car, so I take him on errands, and sometimes we watch documentaries together. In August 2018, there was a meeting at Whispering Waters where I met the regional manager of the property management company which was contracted to oversee the four Rancho Mirage Housing Authority properties. That night, I wrote an email to this regional manager stating, "I'm new at Whispering Waters and so grateful to be in this beautiful apartment. Since the part-time management position for Whispering Waters is open, I'd like to apply for the job." Then I included my qualifications. The regional manager was quite interested in hiring me, and she said she considered me a perfect fit, not for Whispering Waters, but for the resident manager position at Santa Rosa Village. So I submitted my application and all the materials requested. On September 10, the regional manager, my new supervisor, and I had a meeting at San Jacinto Villas where all the hiring paperwork was completed. After this meeting, I went to the office at Santa Rosa Villas to begin training. A set of keys was made for me, and I felt really excited about this. Finally, I had a position where I could utilize my skills. I dreamed of helping residents have a more enjoyable life by providing activities such as chair yoga, simple cooking, and art classes, and bingo games. I also felt relieved that my financial stress was over. Although I, that night, I received a call from my new supervisor. She told me that the city housing manager insisted I be discharged because I'm a resident of Whispering Waters. They don't want residents to be made into property management managers because personal ties to other residents could present a conflict of interest. Although I completely understand this sound decision, I know that sometimes rules and decisions overshadow the humanity involved in a situation. Mine is a very real human story. I'm here and standing up for myself because I believe in my value, and I believe I deserve a break. And now, a new management company has been contracted by the city, paving the way for a clean slate and a positive future. This Tuesday, on their website, they posted the Santa Rosa Village management position. I'm here to ask of you if you, Mr. Mayor, might consider making an exception by allowing me to apply again for the job. I believe the Santa Rosa Village residents would accept me. I could write a letter introducing myself, and then we could have a meeting greet where I could listen to all their concerns and hopefully give them peace of mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak on any items that are not on the agenda for today? Okay, well, thank you for those of you who did come, and those of you who came to listen. I hope you felt that you participated in city government. We'd now like to move on to city council comments, and we'll start with Councilman Charles Townsend. Charlie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a presentation I'm going to show you, but I'm going to start by telling you a little bit about it. Rancho Mirage has been the home of presidents through the years. Also Rancho Mirage has been, and still is, the home of many celebrities in the entertainment world. We are proud to shine a light on one of these personalities here. Rancho Mirage has been her home, an entertainment giant, for the last 49 years. The one and only Kay Ballard is whom I am talking about. I had the honor to interview Kay for the RMTV Channel 17 series, Inside Rancho Mirage, airing before the city council meetings daily this month. I would like to show you a small portion of this program introducing Kay to all of you. If you'd start the program, please.
I don't know where I got it. I don't know why it happened, but I think I'm lucky, because I always knew what I wanted to do.
My name is Ann Margaret.
Do you hear that? That's Kay Ballard.
I don't care.
Well, she made more people famous than you can imagine.
Bad, Kay. She says it, and she delivers it right to your face. Ah.
She's original. She's not like anybody else.
Later, later, we'll talk.
She's one of the great entertaining women of all time. She can do everything, you know?
We'll have coffee, we'll talk.
She is magic.
Let's get real here.
She is really one of a kind. She's a character.
Yodel, yodel, yodel.
You know, she really loves to put people together.
Well, she was good in anything she had to do.
She's a protean talent, and she always was.
Oh, really?
We're very lucky that we have the things that exist of her on television where she would recreate some of the nightclub things she did.
It seems we stood and talked like this before.
When you sit down and try to analyze her career, you just can't imagine what it was that kept Kay Ballard from going from here to here.
She's had this phenomenal career, and it continues to do so. She still works.
You do have senior moments, but it's not so bad.
Welcome to Inside Rancho Mirage, a special program that will be shown on the Rancho Mirage TV station, Channel 17. I am Charles Townsend, and we are here with the renowned Kay Ballard to talk about her love affair with Rancho Mirage, her home for the last, I can't believe, 49, 49 years here, and we had a street named for her, which is Kay Ballard Lane. And what we're doing here is, we're going to talk about how Kay came to be a Rancho Mirage icon, and how this all came about. Also with us is How Wingo, Rancho Mirage resident and executive producer of the new Kay Ballard biography soon to be released. Welcome to you both. Well, that just gives you a brief intro to what the rest of the interview is with Kay that I had the delight to be a part of highlighting her career and her life here in Rancho Mirage. So I urge you all to please try to catch this little glimpse of her with me and the interview that we did, and hopefully down the road, when her biography is released, you'll be able to catch that at a theater. It is an outstanding, outstanding piece of work and a fabulous career. So if we run the end of this.
You bet your ass I would.
Well, there it is, and I urge you again, please try to catch it on the RMTV Channel 17. They're running it before the city council meeting, so we're looking forward to that. I do want to end this with asking Dana, you were instrumental in getting Kay, the street named after her. You want to give a little insight, please?
How many years ago was that, anyway? Do you?
You know, I think it's been at least, I know we were here, Gordon was here, so it's got to be at least 12 years. Yeah.
Well, I was talking with Kay one day at the Jocelyn Senior Center, and somehow the subject came up of naming Rancho Mirage having a reputation for naming streets after movie stars and other stars, and I asked her if she had ever had an application made on, by her or on her behalf, and she told me that she had not. And I said, you know, I, maybe we should give it a shot. You live on a small street, which is a key, because in Rancho Mirage, every, maybe an exception of one or two, but every resident on the street that is to be affected with a name change has to consent to the name change, and to consent to it means that you take all of your stationery and change the addresses on that, you have to notify all your creditors, and it's a big hassle. And I don't think, offhand, that it comes to mind, I don't think there's been a name change since we did this one. At any rate, Kay and I went door to door, and she went door to door on her own as well, and we asked her various neighbors if they would support her having the street named after her, and I've forgotten the name of the street, Charlie.
It's Kay Ballard Lane.
No, no, I, that's.
Oh, I fell right into that.
Charlie, come on.
Look at that, straight man, right here.
Memory, memory problems, that's, that's one thing, but not that one. What's the other, what's the street that it used to be?
I, you know what? I haven't got, anybody have a clue of what it was? Anybody?
Okay, see, none of them.
None of us remember.
Mashy.
What?
Ash.
Ashton?
Mash, Mashy Lane.
Mashy Lane? Thank you, Michael.
Mashy Lane, I guess that's, so it's a Mashy as a golf club, isn't it?
Now, I didn't know you went door to door.
At any rate, we did, and then we brought the matter was for approval to the planning commission, and everybody, everybody on the street, much to my surprise, because we've seen it attempted subsequently, and nobody wants to change all those business address cards. So anyway, we got it approved, and Kay Ballard Lane is there, and Kay has been a close, close friend since then, and Mavon Regens, her partner, they're just two of the finest ladies you'd ever hoped to meet, but it turned out that we got a name change, and they're not easy to get, but I couldn't think of anybody I'd rather get one with.
Well, very good. Thank you, Dana, for, I didn't know all that you had to go through to get that done.
Well, it's a hassle.
Very, very good.
It's a hassle the city creates.
I, I bet. Well, Kay is a great supporter of the city of Rancho Mirage, needless to say, and also the house that we're talking about was the former home of Desi Arnez, who she worked with on the TV program, which was The Mother-in-Laws. So the history of this woman-- So the history of this woman is unbelievable. I know I'm taking too much time here, but I just cannot tell you how proud I am, Dana, that we know her personally and love her. So I urge you to try to watch this little glimpse that we have of a half hour, but down the road, when that biography comes out, I will certainly let you all know. It is a masterpiece of the entertainment world that this woman has known, you name it, she's known them and she's had them over for spaghetti dinners. So with that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Charlie. When are you taking this show on the road?
Well, you know, I can do that. Thank you, Richard.
Okay, well, we're losing our audience, so they just stayed around to see you.
I'm glad they stayed for that. Good.
Okay, Dana, did you have any?
Uh, no, I, I've used my time, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, you did. Okay. Councilwoman, Iris Motrich, you're next in line here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I have just a very brief show and tell related to our city's annual art affair. It's held every year at our wonderful Rancho Mirage Community Park. This time was the eighteenth year it was held and there were many, many vendors from around the country and they come with all their beautiful wares. It's always fun to walk around, do a little bit of shopping and enjoy some of the booths that are manned by our own staff members and also by the law enforcement and by our fire department. It's always amazing to see the incredible equipment they bring with them and we have a few photos of that. And if you haven't been to our art affair, try to put it on your calendar for next year. It is always the first weekend of November and we've always had beautiful weather, so we look forward to seeing you next time. And here are two of our lovely staff members here. Thank you, Jason. And a couple more gals from our office at City Hall. And these are people you might see either at the library or at City Hall. They're always there with a happy face and they're always wanting to help you, whatever your needs might be. Three lovely people from our emergency preparedness commission. And as you can see, they are wearing their vests from their CERT training and they've got all the safety manuals in front of them on the table. And they're always anxious to answer questions and provide information for everyone's safety. Some more members from our library. And these are three great guys from our code enforcement. In fact, one of them's standing right in the corner over here, Brian. So you can see that we're focusing on just the safety of everyone, including your pets. And we're there to answer whatever questions. Couple people from our sheriff's department. And here are some great people from our fire department. And as you can see, I mentioned the equipment that they had. It is quite remarkable and this is all lifesaving stuff that they're glad to show everyone and they're hoping that they don't have to use it, especially with you and in your home. But they are there in case you ever do need them. And this is somebody from our cool station, Todd. He's always there and he's always willing to lend a hand whenever we need him. And this is a great gal who's putting on the Wine and Food Festival this year that's taking place in Rancho Mirage. And here's Dennis and Connie again. They're always here in our audience in the second row and it's always fun to see them again at our different functions at the park. And last but not least, is one of our heroes and he's sitting right here on the dais, Sean Smith. He is always there to, to make sure everything goes perfectly and we're thrilled to have him. And he was kind enough to allow me to take a photo and he's always a good sport. So thank you, everyone. And as I say, it's always the first weekend in November and come out and see us and come out and enjoy all the artwork. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You didn't get any pictures of the lovely council, did you?
No.
Oh, shame on you.
I know. Next time.
Okay, moving onward here, Ted Wild.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the pleasure of taking the CERT Emergency Preparedness Program, which is an acronym for Community Emergency Response Team course last week. The CERT program has the motto, "To do the greatest good for the greatest number of people." And that is reviewed over and over and over again. The city of Rancho Mirage sponsors the program free of charge twice a year and it is taught by Cal Fire Riverside County Fire Department. It was taught by CERT program director firefighter Charles Essling and firefighter Tom Eldridge. The important topics covered were the following: teamwork and clear communication. And by the way, it's very clever, the way this was done, that initially, when you go into the class, you have a wristband. And the wristbands are of different colors and you don't know who your teammates are going to be until you match up the colors. In addition, something as simple as a little Lego kit, putting an automobile together, and different people participating in the construction. Again, the emphasis on teamwork and communication, simplistic and yet critical. Other topics are disaster preparedness, incident command system, fire safety disaster psychology, medical triage and treatment. Emphasized, this was a system used to prioritize the use of space and equipment. Some people needed immediate help, others could wait until the more urgent were taken care of. There was terrorism active shooter, search and rescue, and cribbing, which is a system to stabilize and balance a structure. The most important goal of the Rancho Mirage CERT program is self-preparation and knowledge to be able to help yourself and your family. The knowledge and training learned allows you as a CERT member, again, to do the greatest good for the greatest number of people, to overcome the fear of the unknown. And a few of the slides that were taken from the program, if you will, please, is the use of a, how to use a fire extinguisher. I can tell you this, in just brief conversations with someone at the gym, I said, "Do you have a fire extinguisher at home?" And he said, "No." And I said, "Well, I do, all I do, but it's an antique." It reminded me that I had to replace my fire extinguishers. This is Charles, who you'll meet in a moment, Charles Essling, who is the director of the program and just did a super job. This is one of the, actually, he gets two dummies, myself and working over someone, used as, as a sample in the program. This is the, the training for cribbing and how you use pieces of wood to support an unstable And you're taught how to turn off a gas meter and you're given a tool in the kit to use Again, with the cribbing and with support, the picture here shows how you can raise the structure in order to pull a body out from underneath. Again, something as simple as, in this case, a makeshift sling, supporting my arm with a cardboard, anything that was handy, whether it be a magazine or cardboard, use your creativity to show, to get the support of the limb. And these are two ladies that were in the, the class. Mary on the right has taken it before. The reason I show that is that these ladies are ninety-one and ninety-two years young and the point being is there is no age limitation as far as taking this program is concerned. Again, to do the greatest good for the greatest number of people is the mantra. Iris has been active in this program for many years. She's talked about it, mentioned it earlier today. We have a emergency preparedness commission that is very active. Mary Lou Suter is the chairperson of the commission. And I'd like to call, if I may, firefighters Charles Essling and Tom Eldridge. If you would, come up to the podium, please. And who else is back there? Do I see a couple of other fellows? You're welcome to join, to join. And Brian Kephart, who is our coordinator of the program, is back there. Gentlemen, good to see you again.
See you again.
Thank you. And all I can say is just thank you so much again for the incredible job that you do. It's just wonderful. We learned so much. And as a matter of fact, I see somebody else back there who was one of the students in the class, Christine Beckman. Christine, would you want to stand up, please? Good. Thank you, Christine. Christine, although she's hobbling around, Christine heads up emergency preparedness at the subdivision Palm Desert Greens. And thank you for coming today. And gentlemen, Charles, Tom, if you would, say a few words about the program.
Sure. First off, I want to thank the city for their continued support. As always, outstanding job. It's nice to have the support and recognition. Second of all, this is for the community, you know? Our motto is to self-prepare you at home so you can take care of yourself and your family and overcome that fear of the unknown. So it's been a great program. I'm honored to be a part of it and then honored to keep the tradition going. Thank you for the continued support.
Tom?
Uh, councilmember, thank you very much for being part of the class. It was nice to see a member of the Rancho Mirage City Council take part of some of this training and understand what we do and that knowledge that we can also pass on to everybody. As Charles said, it's a great program. It's a program that was put in place close to ten years ago for the city of Rancho Mirage. I encourage anybody from the city or the surrounding areas to please come down and take the class. You'll have a great time and you'll get to know us too, a little bit better. Thank you, sir.
Great. Thank you, Tom, Charles. Again, thank you for coming today. We appreciate your service. It was a great program and hopefully exposure like this will encourage other people to join the program. And although it's taught twice a year now, maybe we can expand that to more times a year. Thank you so very much. We appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. Very interesting and I hope more of our residents do get involved in the program. It's really an exciting program to, for everybody that lives in Rancho Mirage. Okay, at this time, I'd like to take just a minute to recognize a long-term public servant and Rancho Mirage resident who recently turned one hundred years old. Margaret Ritzold was born on October twenty-ninth, nineteen eighteen, in Santa Paula, California, and moved to the Coachella Valley with her husband and four children in nineteen fifty-six. Margaret began working for the Riverside County Clerk's Office in nineteen fifty-nine, where she worked her way up to be a supervisor. After twenty-one years with the county, she decided to retire and began her painting career. Deciding not to step back in the public service, Margaret served as Rancho Mirage COPS volunteer for eight years, from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and six. She is currently a resident of Parkview Villas, where she's resided since two thousand and one and remains active, meeting monthly with members of her charitable sorority Sigma Delta Phi. Margaret has ten grandchildren, seven great-grandchildren, and one great-great-great-grandchild. Margaret, on behalf of the city of Rancho Mirage, I want to wish you a very happy one-hundredth birthday. And if you'd like to join me down at the podium, we've got a proclamation for you. Margaret, well, one hundred years. What was, what was the most memorable thing you can think of during that period of time?
I can't really think of any. Everything turned out, well, it just kept going every day. That you work at every day. You're gonna have a good day, you're gonna work, you're gonna take care of the kids and it goes on.
Life goes on.
Yeah, that's right.
Life goes on.
What's your favorite thing about Rancho Mirage?
I love the city. I love it. I love where I live. I'm very comfortable since I moved in and I just like it.
Let me give you the proclamation. I'll come around this way. And the proclamation basically says the same thing that I just said about you, your history of Rancho Mirage and of course, everything you've done to make Rancho Mirage a better place to live. So we want to give you this proclamation on behalf of the city council, the city staff, everybody associated with Rancho Mirage. And we hope that you have, can I say another hundred years? That would be pretty good, wouldn't it? So I think it's only appropriate since it's your birthday, even though we missed your birthday by a little bit, that we should sing "Happy Birthday" to you. Okay? Everybody? Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Margaret. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you. Thank you all. I feel very honored.
Well, anytime you want to come back down here, we'll let you sit right in the front seat again. Okay, nice having you. And let me give this to you. You put that in some important spot at your home. And you live, which of the housing?
Apartment five.
Apartment?
Parkview Villas.
Parkview Villas, okay. It's one of those really nice villas in there, yes. Okay, well, thanks again for coming down today and happy late birthday to you.
Thank you very much.
Marcus, did you get a picture?
Yeah, I got a picture.
Okay. Well, that's the first time I've sung "Happy Birthday" to a hundred-year-old individual. Let's hope they keep coming. Okay, so we're now done with the council comments and we'll move on to approval of the minutes from the previous meeting.
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, the next item today is the consent calendar. And this is an item where we include various items that can all be approved by one vote and the items will be discussed by our city manager, Isaiah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, you have seven items on your consent calendar today. Item number one is to waive the full reading of all ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. Item number two is the second reading and adoption of ordinance number eleven forty-one to clarify and declare existing law that no private cause of action is permitted to enforce the municipal code or other city ordinances. Item number three on the consent calendar is to appoint the city manager as the representative to the Coachella Valley Mosquito and Vector Control District Board of Trustees for the remainder of the term vacated by Mr. Monroe, which runs through January seventh, two thousand and nineteen, and to appoint the city manager to the next two-year term, which would expire January fourth, two thousand and twenty-one. Item number four is the receiving file of the September thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen Quarterly Treasurer's Report. Item number five is granting to seven qualified nonprofit agencies, a total of twenty-three thousand, five hundred dollars out of the city's Special Assistance Fund. That is a fund that supports local nonprofits that provide vital services to our community. Item number six is the contracts list. There are two contracts for consideration by the council. The first contract is to replace the library boiler. That is being proposed to be awarded to the lowest and responsive bidder, which was EMCOR, for a total of one hundred and four thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And that is being proposed to be paid for out of the general fund library reserve. The second contract is to E-Tech three sixty. The second contract is to ETEC 360 for document scanning and indexing service of city records. That has been budgeted within the city's budget, so there is no budget adjustment necessary. And ETEC 360 was the lowest bidder for that service and we are anticipating the amount not to exceed $60,000. And item number seven are demands and we are here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Isaiah. Is there anybody in the audience who have a question on any of the consent items? Seeing none, is there anybody here on the dais that would like to hear more about one of the consent items? Okay, with that, could we please have a motion to accept the consent?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar. Second.
There's a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll now move on to the reports and informational items on the agenda, that's item number eight. And the Palms, Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory will be honored at the California Library Association's Excellence Award. And Erin Espinoza, our library director, will discuss this award. Congratulations, Erin.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and city staff. Last week, I actually attended the California Libraries Association's Annual Conference in Santa Clara, California. At their annual conference, CLA inducts members to a taller fame named its Librarian of the Year and honors recipients of the Pre-Excellence Awards. The Pre-Excellence Awards honor the highest quality efforts of California libraries in promoting and communicating their message to their customers. Libraries are encouraged to submit only the best PR materials. There are four Pre-Excellence Award categories: print, electronic, event or campaign, and a wild card category. Up to three awards are given within each of these categories and first-place winners at each of the three levels of budgets of under $5 million, $5 million to $10 million, and $10 million and above. I'm pleased to announce that the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory was awarded the Pre-Excellence Award for Event or Campaign in the under $5 million category for our submittal of the 2017 Rancho Mirage Writers Festival. For the PR Excellence Submittal, we were limited to five materials, which we submitted our staff shirts, writing journals, pen, bookmark, and our website. I was hoping to show everyone the award today, unfortunately, it is still at our framers. The Pre-Excellence Board consists of 10 members from around the state. The comments I heard or were given to our award include, "It honestly does not get any better than this, great work." "Branding is top-notch." "The bookmark was a nice touch, very elaborate." "Amazing how local students are involved." "Love the C-span coverage and mentoring time from regional high school students." "Perfect and professionally-produced materials and website." These comments were just a few that we received. Award winners were asked to be on a panel at the Becoming a Marketing Superstar presentation and afterwards, I had the opportunity to talk with many of our colleagues, who were in awe of what the city, library, and observatory the Writers Festival have been able to create in just a few years. I'd like to take a moment to thank the Rancho Mirage executive team, led by Jamie Kabler, the festival founder, who works throughout the year to ensure a successful writers' club, including our marketing and promotional materials. A special thank you to Rachel Horowitz, our art director, who takes all of our crazy ideas and makes them happen. The Rancho Mirage Writers Festival has become much more than just a festival in January. Over the years, the Writers Festival has tried to think of ways to give back to our community. This year alone, the festival will hold 20 additional free festival-sponsored programs, including the Rancho Mirage Writers Festival Writer Series, the Rancho Mirage Film Club, and the Rancho Mirage Writers Festival Book Club. As many are aware, the Rancho Mirage Writers Festival has become one of the nation's best writers' festivals since its inception in 2014. The Rancho Mirage Writers Festival is a world-class gathering of writers, thinkers, and people contributing to the intellectual vitality of our time. Simply put, the Rancho Mirage Writers Festival is a celebration of the written word. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank our city council, our city manager, for all of your support for this amazing festival and I look forward to what 2019 has in store for our residents, supporters, and our city as a whole. I thank you for allowing me to, this opportunity to share our achievement and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Excellent presentation, Erin. Congratulations to both you and your staff for the job you've done.
Thank you.
The Writers Festival is an internationally acclaimed event and really makes Rancho Mirage extremely proud. Probably some of the greatest satisfaction is the writers themselves when they're here and how inspired they are to participate in this program specifically in a public library. And that means a lot to them. It's not in some formal setting, it's a library that's available to the public and that resonates with them and I think that that has keyed their interest in returning year after year now. So, again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Thanks, thanks again for doing a great job. Okay, we'll now move on to item number nine, which is the public hearing item. And this is a request for a one-year extension of time for tentative tract map 35573. And it looks like Mina is going to do the presentation, senior planner from our outstanding planning department. Mina, it's good to see you here today.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and city council. Today, I will be presenting a proposal for an extension of time for tentative tract map 35573, also known as the new Santa Barbara Cove Estates Development. The request is for a one-year extension of time and it is the applicant's first request. The subject site is located on the east side of Highway 111, behind the desert patio on Catalan Commercial Center. The zoning for the property is District 3 of the Highway 111 West specific plan, medium-density residential, five dwelling units per acre. The project may look familiar as the preliminary development plan was approved by council this past summer. The applicant had been, had been hoping to be able to complete the recordation of the map prior to its expiration, as they have been diligently working towards it, but are in need of some additional time. The tract map is currently in the process of being recorded. The tentative map is for the subdivision of 4.72 acres into 20 single-family lots, with the average lot measuring 8,660 square feet in size. Access will be provided from Mirage Cove Drive with the gated entry. There are two private streets proposed once you enter the development, Cecilia Court and Alejandra Place, which provide access to all 20 homes. The landscape plan for the entry and interior of the site utilizes drought-tolerant landscaping to soften the built environment. The parkway is lined with shoestring acacias, boulders, dwarf coyote bushes, and a plethora of other desert-appropriate vegetation. The entry to the development will include a maximum of six-foot-high wrought iron gates, stucco walls, and decorative pavers. Bluefeint agave, lantana, and Mexican bird-of-paradise are just a few of the shrubs that will be used alongside olive and Australian willow trees. The development is well-planted with a mixture of five-gallon and one-gallon plants, 84% of the plantings are five-gallon. The proposed project meets and exceeds the requirements of the municipal code and specific plan. Staff has not received any outside correspondence regarding this extension. Staff is recommending that the city council approve the requested extension of time. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to address any questions.
Hey, thank you very much. Any questions of staff?
Just one question, Mina. Could you tell us what the range of square footage these homes are going to contain?
On average, about 4,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Really? So, there have been no major changes since we approved this in July? Just an extension to get this act together?
Correct. No changes have been proposed.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and go to council for a comments or a vote, please.
All right, I will do a vote. The city council consider a one-year extension of time for tentative tract map. Just approval? That's all I need to do?
No, no. Not consider it.
Go ahead, Charlie, you're in the right direction.
Thank you, appreciate that. Tract map 35573, and in parentheses, TTM1X35573, which consists of a 4.72-acre parcel to be subdivided into 20 single-family residential lots. The project is located on the south side of Mirage Cove Drive. This is the first request for an extension of time for this tentative tract map.
Thank you. We have a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Oops.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, good work, staff. Mina, you did a great job on that. We'll now move to the final item, which is closed session. And from our city attorney, Steve Quintanilla, here's the items that will come up on the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this the volume here? Is it on?
Yeah.
The city council will now recess into closed session pursuant to government code section 54956.9 regarding one potential initiation of litigation item and one potential significant exposure litigation item. The significant exposure to litigation item is, we do not disclose the facts and circumstances that might result in litigation against the city, since they are not known to the potential plaintiff at this time. The council will also discuss the current case known as Veronica Juarez versus the City of Rancho Mirage and the case known as New Singular Wireless DBA AT&amp;T Mobility versus City of Rancho Mirage. The council will also confer with its labor negotiator, city manager Isaiah Hagerman, pursuant to government code section 54957.6A regarding the Rancho Mirage Employees Association Memorandum of Understanding.
That it, Steve?
That's it.
Okay, we will adjourn to closed session.